Good evening. All right, call to order. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4 through 10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, August 12, 2025, and the Board will take formal action on payments of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Waddell?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Dunn is absent. Francisco?
Here.
Giordano?
Here.
Jodri?
Here.
Mazone?
Here.
Slade?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Venkatesan is absent today. And Dantuno?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance. Next week, we will have a moment of silence. We will have minutes to approve next week.
I'm working on them.
Oh, can we have a volunteer to read the Code of Ethics next month?
I'll do it.
Christina, thank you. All right, I believe we will not have a student rep next week, but we will have recognition. Any discussion on the recognition next week? Okay. Superintendent's report. I did want to let the community know that Dr. Bragan has been in district several days during this past month. He's getting to know the administration and the principals, and he will continue to do that until his starting date on September 1st. The search report, I did talk a little bit with the search committee. Of course, now my notes part on my phone disappeared. There it is. And I will have a more in-depth report from them for next week, but they did want us to let the public know that there are 29 applicants so far in the system. They have started vetting some of those with a few strong leaders already within the mix. For the community Zoom, I was asked by some community members if there's like a preregistration or a link. The link is just one link, there's no preregistration required, and their program allows at least 500 people on the meeting at a time, so they don't anticipate any issue because they haven't been like maxed out before. So on the date that's on the website for the community Zoom, that's open for all. Okay? And we'll have a more in-depth report next week. Any correspondence for today?
None to be read.
Okay. I do want to share with the Board and the public, sorry. I did send an email today to the Town Council Business Administrator and the Town Council President. I wanted to take a moment to see if we can set up a follow-up meeting for our last, on our last Working Together Meeting for Community Affairs. Our last meeting with Mr. Sedidino was in April, and we had some great conversations with visions of way we can unite. I would like to follow up on that with our interim superintendent, Dr. Bragan. Can you please provide a few dates that would work for everyone to continue this project? So just to update the public that that email was sent. Special Committee reports? Okay, I just wanted to share some dates with the public. They will be going on the website soon. I'm just going across the spreadsheet, so I apologize if the dates are out of order. The Septum meeting will be September 18th. The Special Education Committee meeting will be October 7th. There will be a policy, curriculum and policy, but it's really for a policy matter, next Tuesday before the Board meeting, and then a full curriculum and policy and technology meeting on September 30th. The Food and Operations Committee will be meeting October 16th. The Strategic Planning, Finance, and Shared Services meeting will happen on October 15th, and by then we should have the reports from the architects, thank you, on our review of the buildings as well as the demography coming in to the town for our schools. And then, so those are the ones that are on the calendar for September and October. The other thing I wanted to add to the Special Committee reports, because I think it goes under our finance, is we've, I know I have, so I'm going to make the assumption that some other Board members have been getting questions about the town tax bill, so I wanted to share a little bit with the public, a few key starting points. The town fiscal year is January through December. The school fiscal year is July through June, so that makes things a little bit harder when they go to coordinate. The town has a legal ability to do an estimated third quarter taxes up to 5% because full budget numbers from all the components, the school, the county open space, the library, the county tax, and the municipal tax numbers might not be in place and time to do the estimated third quarter taxes. This year, the town chose to do a lower percentage increase for the third quarter. As a result, the difference in the increase and what was billed for your third quarter is added to the fourth quarter. So your third quarter was a very low estimate and what it should have been, and the difference between that and what it was is added to what your fourth quarter was. The total of the paid, your taxes for all four quarters adds up to the correct amount of the total tax bill increase of 9.92% from across the town. It was just not divided into four equal payments, which would have been helpful for families and households to budget easier. A high fourth quarter due right before the winter holiday season is, winter holiday season start is a hard pill to swallow. Yes, the school is the biggest percentage of your taxes at 60%. My opinion is it's also one of the biggest components of a home value. No one is picking a home because your garbage pickup is or is not included. It went up 13%. The county is 17% of your taxes and went up 6.5. Your municipal is 16% and went up 1.58. Fire is 4% of your taxes and went up 3.04. Library is 2% and went up 10.7, 10.20, I can't talk today, 10.20%, and the county open space is 1% of your taxes and went up 11.11%. We were upfront about our budget conversation and our needs. Many of us went to Trenton and contacted state decision makers. We had conversations with the public. No one rolled out the red carpet and popped champagne for the need to raise taxes, but the majority of the voices heard by many of us was in support of what we need to do to save Olbridge School District as we know it. So I wanted to answer some of those questions for the public of why your fourth quarter taxes were so big, because I know I got some emails. I don't know if my fellow Board members did.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
The taxes that were just, that we just got, that was from last year's tax increase? So am I?
So the way that the district's fiscal year works, the increase that we went, so the '25-'26 budget covers quarter three and quarter four of 2025, and then quarter one and quarter two of 2026. So we're a deferred year, so we're kind of broken up. So that's why when you see our impact numbers, it kind of gets offset a little bit by the fiscal, you know, your township. So talking to the township in something we're working on already for '26-'27 budget, because the year hasn't started yet and I'm working on it already, is when those tax numbers come out, breaking up quarterly so that you guys can see as taxpayers the quarterly estimated payment. So that's something that I'm working on those calculations with, obviously, when we get closer to '26-'27 budget. But essentially, the increases is July to September, that's quarter three, and then also October to December, that's quarter four. So that is the, you know, all the tax levy that we went up, including the tax levy incentive aid.
From this year that we just approved.
From this year, correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion on any of the committee information? So hearing of the residents on any agenda item. Okay, seeing none, I will move on. We have nothing in policy at this time. For curriculum and professional developments, item 1 through 3, any conversation or discussion? Finance, can I have a motion for items 1 through 5?
Mazone, motion.
Jodri, a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan is absent. Dunn is absent. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 5 for finance passes.
Any discussion on item 6 through 18, 19? Okay. Athletics, any discussion on items 1 and 2? Can I have a motion for non-certificated personnel office, item 1?
Jodri, a move.
Giordano, a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Venkatesan and Dunn are absent. We'll go to Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution 1 for non-certificated personnel office passes.
Okay. Any discussion on item 2? Non-certificated personnel operational, there's nothing. Non-certificated personnel items 1 through 3?
5.
1 through 5. I'm sorry. Any, can I have a motion, please?
Mazone, motion.
Francisco, a second.
Okay, any discussion? Are any of the Paris here today? Okay, well, we want to welcome the new Paris coming on. Roll call, please.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan and Dunn are absent, and Dantuno?
Yes.
Motion, resolutions 1 through 5 for non-certificated personnel other carries.
Any discussions on item 6 and 7? Okay. Certificated personnel, items 1 through 8, can I have a motion, please?
Giordano will motion, certificated personnel, items 1 through 8, Madam President.
Thank you. A second?
Mazone will second.
Do we have any of our new staff coming in?
We do have to make an administrative correction. We're on number eight, resolution number eight, we're going to administratively remove letter A.
Okay.
Employ Jose Natal. We're just going to administratively remove that.
Okay. Can we invite our new certificated personnel up on stage?
You should vote on them first.
We have to vote, we have to hire, actually hire them first? We want to welcome them first. All right, any discussion before we vote? All right. Can we vote to hire these awesome people? Roll call, please.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Absolutely, yes, and welcome.
Mazone?
This is your last chance to walk away. But yes.
What was that? That was the weirdest. Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
I'm rare for him today.
Venkatesan and Dunn are absent. Francisco?
Yes.
And Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 8 for certificated personnel carries.
Now, we're going to invite our newly hired staff to come up on stage. We'll take a group photo, and then if you could, as you come up, let us know who you are so that we can honor you, your name. Come on up. What's your name?
Adam.
Adam, where are you going, Adam?
High school.
To high school?
Julia Davis.
Julia, going to Cooper.
Carolina Gonzalez.
Carolina, is going to high school?
Alexa.
Alexa's going to Sandberg.
Lauren Johnson from the elementary.
Lauren's going for elementary instrumental.
Elaine, way on Cooper.
Elaine's going to Cooper.
Robin's going to Sheraw.
Joyce is going to Voorhees, and Serena, where are you going? The high school. Okay, cool. Guys, come on in, take one big group photo. They don't want us in this photo, it's all about you guys.
Have a great year.
Welcome to Olbridge. All right. So any conversations on item 9 through 29? Any discussion on 9 through 29? Okay, moving on. Non-certificated transportation, item 1, can I have a motion, please?
Slade, a move.
Mazone, a second.
Any conversation? Roll call, please.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan and Dunn are absent. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution 1 for non-certificated personnel transportation passes.
Any conversation or discussion on item 2 through 7? Okay. Any conversation on transportation, item 1? Can I have a motion for supplies, equipment, and services, items 1 through 4?
Mazone, motion.
Francisco, a second.
Okay, any conversation? Roll call, please.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan and Dunn are absent. Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 4 for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Any discussion on item number 5? Okay. Any discussion or conversation on miscellaneous items 1 through 6? Okay. Any Board Secretary and Board Business?
None to report.
Okay. Hearing of the residents on any school district issue. Is the binder there?
Brooke Richards-Patterson, I just had a question. Have we heard anything from the state regarding that levy application? That was it. Thank you.
I'll take any other.
So we'll do all conversations first, and then we'll answer. Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the hearing of the residents. Mr. Waddell?
So we did hear back from the state. There was correspondence throughout July, August from the state. We did ultimately get approval of all 23 million, well, 22 plus the one. That letter that we got from the state is currently online on our website. It's under the budget section. I think it's finance and budget. It's just a little one-page letter, essentially approves the approval of the $23 million in total expenditures that are increased. So there's not much into it. We haven't heard any other information from that, but that is the way we're operating our budget based on that 23 million as it was presented.
But to give credit where it was due, they did make Mr. Waddell jump through a few hoops with very few, I think he got an email at 3, and it was due, what, by 5? Any dotted i's and crossed t's? So on behalf of the Board and the public, I would like to thank Mr. Waddell for his dedication and hard work on our budget, because we know the state did not make it easy. Does any Board member have any old business to discuss? Any new business?
Oh, I have something. The, coming into the complex, did you notice the road was paved by the grade 9 center? And now we can see the yellow line going in? That was awesome. No, it's because at night, it's hard to see the yellow line when you go out, so I think that's great that now it's paved.
So our budget dollars are going in, repairing.
To that point, if anyone was on Sandberg's campus, Wisdom Way was closed in that direction towards Tystan Road today, so we are paving outside Wisdom Way, outside the stadium. So that was an area that was heavily needed, you know? Hate to have to pay using some of our funds to do these projects, but the outcome was nice, it looked nice. We got a lot of compliments so far from the vendor, so. Did we get any funds from the city on that one? We did not, no. No, that was us.
I had two things for new business. First, Dave Sedidino has his last few days within district, so I wanted to wish him a great last few days with Olbridge, and to thank him again for his dedication and hard work. The other one, I wanted to take a moment to discuss the Town Council's budget presentation slides that have been shared around town. The Town Clerk on behalf of the Town Council did inquire about a joint meeting between the School Board and the Town Council to discuss the budget, but the date was not one of equal convenience, and the latest shared was that they would reach out to continue again in the future. My comment here, I would have stated at that meeting, or I would have gone to their Town Council meeting, but both our meeting and their meetings are tonight. The slide presentation I saw was titled "Today's Date Council Meeting Presentation," so I don't know if any changes have been made since I viewed a copy at the end of July from a community member. I could not find a link to the presentation on the town website, no matter where I looked, and it doesn't mean it's not there, I just couldn't find it in the 10 minutes that I spent looking this afternoon. I've been vocal in my desire to have the Town Council and the School Board work together as a fact that we represent the same community. I am disappointed by the separation inspired by the presentation. Everywhere that the presentation, the school is mentioned, it is in bold font. Every piece of the pie went up due to increase in costs and desire to maintain resources and programs, and to bold the School Board's points fingers and furthers the idea of not working together. Again, the School Board did not raise taxes easily. We were given numbers and information from the state, increased expenses from our insurance companies and utility suppliers, and we're not spending tax dollars on company cars and increased paychecks for the Board members. We are maintaining and improving our educational opportunities for our students as we swore an oath to do upon becoming Board members. We didn't hide from our district financial needs. We had budget presentations available on our website, and we asked the public for input. A few Board members have requested that this meeting be scheduled after the election to remove the insertion of politics from either side to ensure fair, productive, and open dialogue, as no formal action or change to the budget can or would be done at that meeting. There was no agenda of what the joint meeting would consider, consist of to cover, and all of our budget information has been shared and is always available on our website. So I was just surprised, like I said, you know, the school was just always bolded. Everyone went up, as I stated in the tax presentation earlier. So are we the biggest piece of the pie? We are. Did we go up the most percentage? We did, but everybody went up. And to just point fingers that it's all the School Board's fault, I find that offensive on behalf of the work this Board did to get to those numbers and the hard decisions this Board made to keep the programs that makes Olbridge, Olbridge. So those are my two points. Anyone else have anything further to say?
No, thank you. I think that the School Board tax is always 60%, no matter what. No matter what, they go up, they're always 60% of our total, of our total taxes, so.
If there's no further comment, can I have? If there's no further comment, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mazone, motion.
Giordano, a second.
Okay. I want to wish everyone enjoy the last few weeks of summer. We'll see you next week.
It's not over yet.
It's not. We have a great time. So, and we'll see everyone next week. Thank you.
All in favor for Exec?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Congratulations to all the new IRAs.
We'll see you soon.